Okay. I wait for Cindy. Okay, ready to go. Welcome, everyone. I'm glad you could make it out tonight. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples of the Hunkamun Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. Again, welcome, and we have some announcements, trustees. Trustee Larson?
Thank you. Pink Shirt Day, February 26th is Pink Shirt Day. Pink Shirt Day began in 2007 when a student in Nova Scotia was bullied for wearing a pink shirt to school. It has since been recognized annually as a day to stand against bullying and to be advocates for greater acceptance, respect, and inclusion for all. This year's theme, Let Kindness Grow, is about cultivating a community of kindness. Just like tending to a garden, together we can help nurture a sense of belonging where we live, work, and go to school. The Board's Strategic Plan, Priority Two: Equity and Inclusion, outlines our commitment to ensure that all of our students, families, and staff feel welcomed, are treated respectfully, and have a sense of belonging. Let's work together to sprinkle acts of kindness and plant seeds of empathy and compassion throughout our community on this day, which we're wearing early on February 26th and all year long. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wong, you have an announcement?
Good chairman. Lives regarding the 2025-26 annual budget will be accepted with our prior notice at the March 12th, 2025, and April 23rd, 2025. Regular meeting of the board. Please note that budget updates will be made available on the district's budget website. All budget feedback will be considered by the board as part of the budget process, which is anticipated to be completed by May 21st, 2025.
Thank you. Secretary Treasurer Wang, is there any materials not included in packages available to the public?
Thank you, Chairperson. All information has been published on the district's website.
Thank you. Moving on to the adoption of agenda, there is one addition under six, and I'm going to call it 6C, there is an in-camera meeting on February 18th. There's a record of it. So, moving, oh, so adopt the agenda. Trustees, are there any additions to the agenda? All right, well, I'll give you my next one. Looking for a mover, trustee sergeant, then seconded by trustee Yang. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, presentations, brief, and special recognitions, we have neither of the three, so we're going to move on to questions from the public. We're missing someone. All right, are there opportunities for members of the public to come forward with questions regarding tonight's agenda items? Or ask a question about tonight's agenda? Oh, okay, well, keep moving here. We have our executive report.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's hard to believe that we already passed the halfway point of the 2024-25 school year. Time goes by so quickly. There's so much to celebrate and so much for us to be proud of in the Richmond School District. Our dedicated staff shows up each day in our schools and central departments to help students learn. This collective effort with everyone pulling together alongside families and educational partners is a reason for the excellence we experience daily in our district. As I visit schools and workplaces throughout the district, I'm filled with gratitude for the commitment and dedication of our staff, and I sincerely thank them for the hard work they do each day supporting our students. I have a number of, just a couple of updates. As part of my executive report tonight, I would like to highlight two important program transitions. The first one is the Just Before Program, and the second one is the Code Program. And there is a report as part of the public package with reports from the Assistant Superintendent. I'll start with the Just Before. The Just Before Program is a licensed half-day preschool initiative that was designed by the Ministry of Education and Childcare as a pilot. And that pilot is concluding the end of June of this year, June 20, June 30th, 2025, is when that pilot comes to a close. So that program will be transitioning. There's a transition we have in place that allows the district to repurpose the space to better serve the community, the needs of the community. So that, that requires us to, for example, the Woodward Strong Start Center, which has the lowest daily attendance, will be relocated to grow our elementary, where demand is higher. So again, when that program closes, the pilot terminates at the end of June, we will have opportunities to meet the needs of the community in more intentional ways. And again, there's more information in the report that is, that is included in the package. The second update with respect to the Code Program, the Code's Young Parent Program began in 1991 in our school district. The purpose of the program was to provide educational programming and a pathway to graduation for students who were pregnant or parenting. District staff has been reviewing and monitoring the student enrollments in that program. And, and as of January 8th of this year, there are nine students currently in the program. Eight of those, eight of these students are adult age, and one is school age. So the projection for the 2025-26 years that there will be no school age students in the program. As a result, that program will be, will transition as well. We are committed to continually reviewing those programs to ensure that they're responsive to the needs of students in our district. And to ensure that those students continue to be supported, there, we have a clear transition plan in place. And I just want to highlight firstly, that district staff will work with the Code Program staff, the current students in the program, and the continuing education, continuing education staff to provide an individualized transition to the Adult Graduation Program at the Continuing Education, Continuing Education Adult Education Center. That's a mouthful. This transition of this educational program will be completed by the end of this calendar year, December 2025. Secondly, staff will work with community agencies to individualize transitions for current code students to adult services for mental health and parental support. And thirdly, future potential students will be provided individual registration support and depending on enrollment age and individual needs, placement in an education program at either the Adult Education Center, their homeschool, or through the alternate program available at the mineral sites. This individualized process will be overseen by the district administrator in our district. So just wanted to highlight that we certainly have a solid transition plan in place. Want to make sure that those young, those, those young moms are supported as they continue their education journey in our district. I would also like to just take a moment to speak a little bit about our strategic planning process. I'm pleased to announce that we've commenced the engagement process as per the plan that was approved by the board at last board meeting. That process, we invite in students, families, staff, partner groups, and the broader Richmond community to participate in creating the 2025-2030 strategic plan. We believe that together we'll make a meaningful impact on the future of education in our district, and your voice does matter. There are a number of ways that parents and students and staff and community can contribute to this important process. We have a survey that is, online survey that is already out there, and I know that there's uptake in that survey. We have it in English and also in Chinese, so that's a survey. I was there, I was pleased, thanks to the RODPA for inviting me to the last meeting, where I was able to share with parents as well that the survey was, was available for their, for their participation. There's also open houses. We have four, to be exact, that we've already confirmed. April 8th, the first one is at MacMath Secondary School. April 14th at Palmer Secondary. April 15th at Burnett Secondary. And April 24th at Canby Secondary. These are open houses for members of the public to attend and to certainly participate in this very important process. We also have an online session. That, the online session is on April 28th. So all of this, by the way, all of this information is on our public website, so feel free to, I would encourage you to check our website for up-to-date information and related to the strategic planning process. There's also an opportunity to provide feedback online and out through our website. Again, that's email educationoffice@sd38.bc.ca. So clearly, these are all opportunities. We want to make sure that there are different channels for, for our community to provide feedback to this very important process that will guide a strategic plan that will guide our district for the next five years. And that's, that plan will certainly be one that we believe that through your voice will make, will make a difference. Lastly, as is customary at each school, at each board meeting, a public board meeting, we get to hear from our students. And tonight, a group of wonderful youngsters are with us today, and with their proud principal and staff in the boardroom to talk to us about incorporating the First Peoples' Principles of Learning to promote belonging, connection, and community through gathering in circles. And of course, when we talk about kindness, I was so pleased to hear trustee Larson start, you know, with the announcement around Pink Shirt Day and kindness and belonging, obviously, very much integral today, so I'm really, the timing of this could not be more appropriate. So at this time, I'll pass it to my colleague, Assistant Superintendent Lang, to take it from here. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I am honored and excited to introduce a group of students from Thompson Elementary School, along with their teacher, Ms. Sonia Bone, and principal, Mr. Kevin Vines. We're here to share their inspiring stories of how they are embracing, honoring, and implementing the First Peoples' Principles of Learning within their school community. They have restructured their school-wide assemblies and classroom practices by choosing to gather together in circles. Staff and students at Thompson Elementary are using the structure of coming together in circles to grow their sense of connection, belonging, and positive and personal cultural identity. This is a specific action that aligns with their school story focus for the year, which is to create a respectful and inclusive environment, increasing feelings of belonging, and enhancing student self-regulation and goal setting. This initiative aligns with our 2020-2025 strategic plan, particularly our commitment to supporting all learners in developing a sense of connection and belonging. This is included throughout Priority One, Inspired Learners; Priority Two, Equity and Inclusion; and Priority Five, A Connected Learning Community. By integrating Indigenous perspectives and practices, these students are not only enhancing their own learning, but also contributing to a more inclusive and equitable learning environment for all. As has already been acknowledged in the trustee announcements and by our superintendent, we will be recognizing Pink Shirt Day next week, and the important work that is being done at Thompson to build a stronger community will be reflected in their activities on February the 26th. So please join me in welcoming these students, along with Ms. Bone and Mr. Vines, as they share more information on their learning journey at Thompson Elementary School.
My name is Anshuman, and I'm in grade seven.
My name is Athena, and I'm in grade seven.
My name is Alex, and I'm also in grade seven. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that we are gathered on the traditional and unceded territory of the Musqueam people and the Hunkamunum Language Group, which these lands have been cared for by Indigenous people for the thousands of years. We honor their history, culture, and the deep connections they have to this land. As we continue our learning and work here, we commit to respecting the rights and contributions of the Indigenous communities, and we are grateful for the opportunity to be here today. We are going to share a video that captures how we have incorporated circle into our assemblies. Enjoy.
When we walk together in a good way, we share wonder as we wander and play, watching stories. We weave and tell new stories in circle under the willow.
Just like the braided sweet grass, we are stronger together.
As you just witnessed, we have had several assemblies in circle. These include our welcoming assembly, our Terry Fox Assembly, our Orange Shirt Day Assembly, our Remembrance Day Assembly, and our Pink Shirt Day Assembly that is coming up, which we will be sitting in circle for again. With our grade sevens as a center, as visible leaders, they're invited to share about themselves, their ancestry, and their values, which can be seen here in a video of Anusha.
My name is Anusha, and I will be sharing a bit about myself. I was born in Vancouver, Canada, in 2012. Both my parents are from Pakistan. Both sets of my grandparents were also born in Pakistan. I love how our Thompson community is always so friendly, welcoming, and kind to everyone. I feel lucky to be part of the Thompson community. Thank you.
In addition to sitting in circle during our assemblies, we also sit in circle in our classroom. Our classroom circles take place every Monday morning. We start by pushing back all the tables and placing our chairs in a circle. We use our Musqueam Thunderbird carving as our talking stick. This helps indicate who is talking and allows listeners to be aware that the person with the talking stick should be the only one starting. Ms. Bone, our teacher, begins by asking us who would like to start. If no one volunteers, she will go ahead and begin. She acknowledges territory, then begins with our circle prompt. A majority of the time, we do hi, lo, ha-ha, and hope. Hi being the best part of our weekend, lo being the worst part of our weekend, ha-ha being something funny that happened over the weekend, and hope is something we hope to happen this coming week or in the future. We, we like to switch it up from time to time to keep it interesting. Our past circle prompts were, if you could have any superpower, what would it be? What, what are the most important values for healthy friendships and mood managers? Like, what is your battery level, or what percentage are you charged? And if you were a color, what color are you feeling?
Circles allow us to feel equal, knowing that no one is better than anyone else. In circle, we can all, we can all see each other and feel included. This is important because we value respect and a safe place to share. Our circle routine helps us learn more about each other and is especially helpful when we have a new student. We make them feel included and help familiarize them with our classroom and students. The circle symbolizes infinity and wholeness. It also represents the Indigenous medicine wheel, which symbolizes physical, emotional, mental, and spiritual health. Gathering in a circle can help us feel more connected and complete. By facing each other, we can see and hear each, we can hear, we can see and hear everyone in our circle, which helps bring the community together and build a stronger connection. Recently, we read the story Zen Shorts in Circle and discussed how we related to the teachings of the story. The message of one of the stories is holding on to anger, and that we can choose to let resentment go instead of carrying it with us.
Our circle has improved throughout time and practice. With months of experience, we became more capable of acknowledging the importance and strength that the circle holds, and the significance of being able to express ourselves through an inclusive and safe space. Participating in our circle routine can increase respect for others and benefit our listening skills. It gives everyone a chance to be heard and is a way of learning about each other. When students take part in circle, it helps improve their engagement and is a fun way of practicing how to make connections.
At Thompson, we have our school story that continues to be focusing on creating a respectful and inclusive environment and increasing a sense of belonging. Some standouts from our students and a culmination of collecting data and listening to student voice is their appreciation and fundamental expression of wanting the holding of safe spaces for learning to occur. Circle is one framework, one way of setting the container to foster such learning spaces. And whether it's at a big scale of whole school assemblies, or a group of, a group in a classroom, or even in smaller settings with solving conflict in a restorative practice, the framework and routine of circle is proving to be supportive for our community. As the First Peoples' Principles of Learning guides and reminds, this learning recognizes the role of Indigenous knowledge, that learning involves patience and time, and learning requires exploration of one's identity. We have recently developed a social responsibility committee at our school, and as we look ahead to Pink Shirt Day, and as Alex noted earlier, coming together as a school in circle again, we have decided to use story as the anchor to guide the learning in our classrooms. Each division will explore care and respect for themselves, for each other, and for our place, using the same anchor text, Zen Shorts by John Muth. And this will enable differentiation to occur while also creating a sense of coherence when each class shares what they are learning in our assembly, as we continue to elaborate on the story of who we are as a whole at Thompson, and we continue to tend the creating of a respectful and inclusive environment where everyone belongs.
We would like to invite the trustees, our superintendent, and our secretary treasurer to join us in a circle to model its power for everyone else here, as we invite your comments and questions for the next section of the meeting.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to our circle. Thank you so much, everybody, for being here today. This is really powerful. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the talking piece before we begin. It's a thunderbird, and it was carved by Jack Stogan from Musqueam. I had the opportunity to be a teacher on the Indigenous Success Team for quite a while, and this just reminds me of my time working with Terry Point, Nora Stogan, part of the Stogan family, and the connection that we have to the land here. And the thunderbird represents power, strength, and also overcoming negative energy. So just very powerful. A couple of protocols about the talking circle that I've been taught from colleagues, Monique Shiard, who was on the Indigenous Success Team, Terry Point, Nora Stogan, who I mentioned, are that the talking circle, it's often called a talking circle, but it's more of a listening circle. We have two ears, one mouth, for a reason, so we're actually listening more than we're speaking. And just speak from the heart. It's okay to pass, it's okay to hold space and have a moment, and just that we're all connected, no one's better than anyone else, like the student said. And it's a safe place to share what happens in circle, stays in circle. So I would just invite, if you're comfortable, to share one word, or even if you'd like to share a little bit more about what you've heard the students sharing today and your connection to circle. What I would want to share is, I'm just so proud of you all. You're amazing. I could never have done that in grade seven. And I was also just amazed, I had a TOC in one day, and I didn't put circle in my notes. It was a Monday that I was off, and I just was rushed. I think one of my kids was sick, so I didn't have circle in my day plan. And the TOC said, I hope it's okay, the students asked if we could do circle. So we did it, and I just, I just thought, oh my gosh, wow, this is amazing. And I've had students more often saying, could we share our poems in circle? Could we do this in circle? And it's just been really powerful to see. Of course, it's not always perfect, and there's tricksters in the circle sometimes, but yeah, it's, it's been an incredible practice, so I'm feeling very grateful. I think that would be my word.
I personally like circles that, because we can like share, like what we feel, or like what we've done, so like, we can like connect maybe a lot, and maybe equality. It makes everyone feel equal and makes, you know, no one feels left out.
I would say heard, because everyone is heard and no one is judged. You can say anything, and you're never judged, and just as Anshuman said, you can share anything.
The word that comes to mind for me is power, and it's, it's the power of the circle itself. It's just, it's, it's a really powerful shape, and it's great that we're taking circle outside of the building that we've had it in, and it's, it's spreading.
What comes to me, I think, is respect. When I look around the circle, I want to listen to you all speak, and I, I feel the respect that you show towards others, towards yourself, towards this building, towards the school, and towards our land, and so, yeah, that's what comes to my mind.
I like circle. Just like me, I can see all the people's face here. If, if, if arranged in line, maybe I hide some bodies. And really welcome the free student and the teacher and the principal come here, so us, and the circle is really good, that we can respect each other and see all the face, and you can see all, all the other people, and just like, respect each other. Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing the strength to us. I want to share the word, strength. I think in the time of uncertainties and difficulties, all we need is strength in our emotions, in our collectiveness, togetherness. We need the strength to overcome all the difficulties. And I'm so grateful for the principal, the teacher, and the students to bring the strength to me. And I'm so grateful for the principal, the teacher and the students to bring the strength to me. And I love the thunderbird. Thank you.
Thank you. The circle to me, um, means belonging. I always feel, I've always said with the circle, I always picture if you're lonely or feeling a certain way and there's a circle around you always. Sometimes you can't even see it. But you're surrounded by people that love you or care about you and that soon as you mentioned the circle, that's what came to me. I also want to thank you so much and I hope you realize that you sharing with us teaches us. So as you're learning, you're teaching us as adults, because this is all new for us. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I guess I want to use the word sharing because, um, you've inspired me to take this idea um, to my Rotary Club. Because my Rotary Club, sometimes it's not, they're not respectful of each other when they're talking and we do share. Uh, every meeting, everybody shares something. And I'm thinking that it's much more respectful and welcoming to do it in a circle. So I'm going to take this idea that I've learned from you guys to that meet, to my meetings for Rotary. So I think this is wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing this. I immediately went, wow, good idea. So thank you very much.
Well, I want to first off, thank, um, the three of you for presenting. It's no, uh, small feat to come to a, uh, crowd like this to present. So all the kudos to you and to our educators for, for sharing, um, your practices and, 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 you know, uh, what's been working well in our school and, you know, the, 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 the deep meaning behind this. Uh, I will get a little theoretical because, um, I think space as a social construct is such a powerful lens to look at this. Uh, I mean, uh, for so long, um, our society is built on of us versus them. And that's deeply, um, incorporated in all our settings. You know, you look at our boardroom, you know, folks coming to our table here faces us, uh, in a very more or less adversarial way. That's the same way at job interviews. That's the same way in parliament, et cetera, et cetera. But by coming together as a, uh, as a circle, um, for all the reasons that the students have mentioned, uh, this evening, uh, just ensures that our society moves forward in a more unified and powerful way, um, in a way that respects, uh, one another. Uh, and yeah, I can't, uh, I, 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 I really, um, am glad that you were able to share this with us tonight. Thank you.
Uh, first of all, uh, thank you very much for the, for sharing with us the meaning of the word circle. We, as a member of the, you know, so- society, uh, we always use the word circle or circulo in Spanish. But thank you. And just remember on a lighter note, the word world, community, power, and society have heard could not be complete without circle. So just remember that the importance in terms of its significance, in terms of its, uh, literal, you know, and, uh, other kind of symbol. I think it reminds us that we are interwoven. That's why Canada is so famous for mosaic. Because of the word cir- of the circle and its, and its meaning. Uh, you know, we are not the melting pot, but, uh, you know, and, and the one, we have a legislation that preserve our cultural heritage and our right to form associations and to form a society that hold for the better world. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Of course, we're so proud of you. And I can tell from your teacher and your principal's faces and of course, your parents with the big smiles on your faces. So thank you for doing this tonight and, uh, it's just wonderful. The word that comes to mind for me is humanity. And I think you've heard a number of people touch on why this is so important. Um, we, uh, obviously living in very interesting times and sometimes you hear about a lot of divisions in society. What you've taught us is that the future is bright and the future is actually exciting because we have people like yourselves who remind us, the adults, that we don't have to go after one another or that we can actually be there for each and every person, regardless of their backgrounds, their identity, their context. I was still taken by that video, how that young lady, that student talked about how welcoming. So I'm looking forward to my next visit to Thompson, to be a part of your circle. So thank you so much for tonight. This is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing the circle. I think the circle is so powerful. And the thing that I'm thinking about right now is Elder Joe, who is a really special person to me, who has helped me, uh, learn to be better and be more inclusive and think about the indigenous community. And I think about truth and reconciliation and I think about what he would think right now looking at, uh, your assemblies. And he would be so proud, um, that the world is listening, hearing and making things better. And a question I would have for you, if we're allowed to, is, you know, what did the, I saw you had special guests that were helping you and were they elders and what did they think? This must be so powerful for them to see this, that the people who are going to be running the world, all of you are so inclusive and so caring. So if we get time for questions, I'd really like, uh, because the circle is, as you know, so important um, to the indigenous community and we can learn so much and you guys have. And so thank you for sharing.
Thank you so much. Um, so I think, well, we could probably go around all night, but we have limited time. Um, so I'll close it there and I think we have time for questions after. It'll be okay.
Trustee Sergeant, you were talking about a question, so why don't you take, start us off?
Okay, just a question around how powerful the circle is for also indigenous people and the deeper meaning for, um, that community and how we all have to work on that together. And I'm just wondering, I saw special guests in your assemblies who led on this, they helped lead the, the dance or the, the entrances. And so how do you think they felt coming to your school? And do you have any thoughts about, um, any conversations you had with them or how they, they impacted you? Thanks so much.
Um, so the, the person that came to our school was named Peter White. He did, um, some performances. Um, he, he did powwow dancing and, um, we, I think he might have felt that like better about and good that we were in a circle because he probably felt more welcomed. I think that the circle really makes you feel welcomed and yeah, that's what I personally think. I don't know if anyone else wants to say.
Rusty, any other questions?
I'm, I'm, I'm curious, um, learning something new or having something like this new in your life. Um, I, I, I've heard you talk about belonging and respect and all those wonderful characteristics and, and things that we want. Did you feel, do you, can I say this? Did you feel like it was, uh, like a lesson taught to you or just something that you felt as it was happening? Does that make sense is my question? As you're part of it.
Like a practice as a, kind of, okay.
To me, I think it was something that, uh, came to us more than being taught as a lesson, um, in circle. Um, I've been in Miss Bones class for two years, so I've been doing it for, um, a little longer. I just felt like circle was a safe way, um, and like a judgment-free way to share, um, how you feel and just share more about yourself. And it's like, it feels a lot more comfortable than, you know, um, typically sitting in a row of desks and, um, you know.
Thank you.
I was wondering if I could add on to that a little bit, but, um, I fe- feel like, as I said earlier, you're just not judged. And like Athena was saying, like, it's very comfortable. But at first, yes, we were a little bit like scared. But as it went on, even a week in, we all felt comfortable. We said our names and we all felt that, like I said earlier, welcomed. And I think that's a good way to introduce like a classroom and how to introduce everyone to each other.
Rusty Beliza?
I'm proud of you guys. Uh, I'm talking to the future leaders of our community. Talking of one heart, one mind, sense of belonging and, uh, connect- connection. If you were to advise the board, what's, what's the, uh, I guess, the better way to poster that sense of belonging in your school with your fellow, uh, s- schoolmates?
Could you repeat the question?
How, how could we, if I'm new to the school, for example, how, how, how would you make me feel that you are my friend, that you welcome me and make me like a human being?
So personally, if there was like a new person who just came to the school, probably make them like feel like, like they're like part of the community by like maybe teaching them about this stuff. So they can like feel like they're in this community. Um, Miss Bone, um, has told our class about how our subs have felt very welcomed in our community. Um, a lot of our students smile at each other in our hallways and, um, we always greet each other. So I feel like, um, we kind of like the little things like smiling at each other, you know, waving at each other. Um, it just makes us feel like, uh, we can, we have a sense of belonging.
Any other questions?
Can I just add something? I would like to tell you that I have known your teacher since she was about, I think, fifteen maybe. And I can't, I can tell you from the moment I met her, she gave a safe feeling to everyone around her. And I can't think of a, um, a, a per- a more perfect person to be leading, uh, these children, um, in, in their learning. You've, anyway, I, I thought you should know that.
Anyone else? You know, when you turn on the TV and you see all the crazy things that are happening, you think, the crazy world. And, uh, how we're going to get ourselves out of all these problems, I know remains to be seen, but then I come here and I see students, I go, you know what, like, that's our hope there. Um, we're doing the best we can, but, uh, uh, when I see you folks out there and I think, oh, we're going to be in good hands here. And so, uh, keep doing what you're doing. And, uh, uh, as I said, you know, as Miss Bone said, there's probably a million words I could come up here. And, uh, like I say, one appreciative is one of my biggest ones that I appreciate you guys uh, for, for who you are, for what you do, for what you're going to be. Uh, I think it's very exciting and, uh, like I said, I think we'll be okay. Folks, anything else? Do you have any questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming.
We have brought a book called Walking Together. This is what we use for our welcome assembly and we would like to gift you each with one now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lyne.
Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you very much. And, uh, now, we always tell everyone after your presentation is you're welcome to stay for the whole night to our meeting. But if you decide you want to leave, then we'll understand. Right?
Thank you. Thank you again. It's wonderful.
That was wonderful. All right. So the dust settles. All right. So we are going to move on with our agenda. Uh, we are now up to item six, approval of minutes from prior meetings. There was a record of an incoming meeting of the board held Wednesday, January twenty second, actually one held last night. Um, we do have regular meeting, uh, uh, of the board minutes, or sorry, meeting of the board held Wednesday, Jan twenty second for approval. So having said that, uh, are there any errors or issues in the minutes? Not seeing any, could you get a mover in a second or trustee sergeant move seconded by trustee Larson, all in favor? Thank you. Carrie. Um, with this arising from prior minutes, we have a twenty, a report twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five amended annual budget bylaw. Three readings, uh, report from the secretary treasurer is attached. Do you want to start it off?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Chair President. Uh, so my report is on page nineteen of the public meeting agenda package. And the proposed, um, uh, bylaw is on page twenty-four of the meeting package. Uh, so the twenty-four, twenty-five amended budget includes a consolidated budget of three hundred seventy-six million dollars. And that includes the updated revenues and expenses associated with the student population and services required for our student body. So the amended budget is a balanced budget and is compiled in accordance with the requirements in the School Act and the Ministry and Board Financial Reporting Policy. That is my report and I welcome any questions from the board.
Trustees, are there any questions for Secretary Treasurer Wang? Okay, trustee Yang, trustee Yang?
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, just on, uh, just two questions related to, um, funding decreases that, uh, have been highlighted in the, uh, report. Um, so the I C Y team, I, uh, from what I can see is a, a four hundred K, uh, the, uh, funding decrease, is that right? And for what particular reason?
Yeah, uh, thank you for that question, trustee Yang. Uh, so the I C Y, uh, team funding, that's, uh, designated funding received from the ministry. So what happened is this, uh, point eight million dollars decrease is due to timing difference. What happened was, uh, the district received the ministry funding prior to June thirtieth, uh, for this year. Uh, so therefore, uh, we have to record, according to ministry reporting policy, we have to record the revenue when we received it, which is before June thirtieth. So all the revenues has been recorded in last year's financial statements. So in this year's amended budget, we'll just do a comparable adjustment, which is, which is going to show a decrease. So the total funding, the cash is not, hasn't been decreased, it's just the timing difference.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you clarifying that because I think, um, yeah, the, on, on paper, when it says it's a decrease, it's certainly concerning, particularly especially when it comes to something, um, as important as, um, uh, I C Y teams, which support, uh, mental health and, um, uh, student needs. Um, and then, and then just on the decrease for, um, our link program, um, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, the link program was, um, uh, the, the, the federal government made the determination. Uh, this is prior to December twenty twenty-four. Uh, the link program will be discontinued enrichment school district as of April one, twenty twenty-five. So therefore, there's a little bit, uh, small decrease in the special purpose fund. Uh, so that is part of the consolidate budget and, uh, it doesn't affect the district's operating budget.
Perfect. Uh, no, I appreciate the clarity and I think, um, you know, it is, um, separate from K to twelve. But, you know, um, I think there's a reason why, uh, link was part of, um, or um, the district was a service provider for, for these kind of services. And, um, uh, that is to meet an educational need in the community and, um, you know, understanding that um, these things are beyond the scope of, um, uh, uh, the board as this is a, um, immigration, um, a policy decision from Ottawa. a policy decision from Ottawa, I think, um, although uh those needs don't go away just because the programs do. Uh, and so certainly as a trustee, I want to um, uh, uh, you know, and, and the things I've been hearing on the ground is, you know, the needs are still there. So uh certainly um keep, keeping a keen eye on, on, on that piece. And um, yeah, hopefully uh we do address this need uh senior governments some way, somehow. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Yang. Trustee Wong, and then followed by trustee sergeant.
Thank you, Chairman. So my question is that uh is that uh the local capital fund is can just like transfer between the local uh between the operation fund? We can always, every year can do that?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, thank you, trustee Wong, for that question. So again, this is a accounting treatment. So what, what it means is uh the school district spends uh three million dollars. Um, obviously, we haven't completed the school year. But uh based on the estimate and based on historical trends, the annual capital spending is about three million dollars. And these are uh spending happening in our schools, in our classrooms, for small equipment, computer labs, those type of things. And uh these are in uh those spendings are capital in nature. And uh when we spend it, we charge them in operating. And then at the end of the year, we'll transfer them to uh the capital fund based on the ministry's financial reporting requirement.
Thank you.
Trustee Sergeant, followed by trustee Beliza?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, not really a question on the budget, just to follow up with uh trustee Yang. Uh, the, the link funding and the decrease of it is very important to many districts in the lower mainland. And I did bring it forward to the last metro meeting and we had a discussion about it. And they are gathering up some information. There is a metro meeting tomorrow um which I'm attending, so I'll also see if there's any updates there. But there is a definite place for us to advocate further on that funding that is so important to our community. Thank you.
Trustee Beliza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page six of page twenty-nine, uh, we have the twenty twenty-five amended annual budget, which shows a three million surplus, which was uh transferred to the local capital reserve. On, on page two, we have uh also twenty twenty-five amended annual budget. And uh there is like a budgeted surplus of only of two thousand, two million, six hundred fifteen thousand. Can you explain the or clarify for the listeners?
Um, yeah, thank you, trustee Beliza. Again, this is according to the ministry's financial reporting requirement. It's uh, it has to be shown as a net revenue, but in reality is, is a net spending. So what happened is uh uh the districts as a whole, we spend about three million dollars every year on capital purchases. You know, for small equipment, furniture, those type of things. And at the end of the year, we will transfer the spending and recapitalize the trans- uh capitalize the spending from the operating and move them from operating fund to the capital fund. So, but according to the prescribed, the financial reporting template, we have to show it this way.
Uh, what it means as of June, we have the three million being transferred. But right now, what it was being transferred, now it is being reflected to the current uh a financial statement that what is left is two mi- two point six, two million, six hundred seventy-five thousand. Is that correct?
Um, uh, can you clarify which uh page are you looking at the two million?
Yeah, on page two.
Page two.
In other words, uh, we transferred the three million, but that was then. Now it's, this is after September and we spent uh you know, something.
Um, so my apologies, uh trustee Beliza, on page two of the package, I do not see the
Page thirty-five, I'm sorry. Page twenty-five.
Um, so yeah, so that is not the uh, it, it, it's two different things.
Mm-hmm.
So this one is about uh the budgeted surplus for the year capital fund. This is within the capital fund. Uh, so that is more to do with the major capital projects that the district is carrying out. Um, uh, based on the uh capital, uh, capital, capital um support provided by the Ministry of Education. So this is different from the three million dollars annual spending in the capital, uh, small capital equipment purchases.
Thank you for that explanation.
Are there any more questions? All right, let's move on to the recommendation for the Secretary of Treasury. That being that the Board of Education approved the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five amended annual budget bylaw by way of three readings. And that board authorizes the chairperson of the board, superintendent and secretary treasurer to sign the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five amended annual budget bylaw and submit the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five amended annual budget bylaw together with the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five amended annual budget of the Ministry of Education and Childcare by February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Trustees, do I have consensus that three readings of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five amended annual budget bylaw take place in this meeting? Yes, thank you. I will read the first, I'll read the first reading of the bylaw in full. Please bear with me. Uh, am- amended annual budget bylaw. A bylaw of the Board of Education, a school district number thirty-eight Richmond called the board to adopt the amended annual budget of the board for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five pursuant to section one thirteen of the School Act, R S B C nineteen ninety-six, C four twelve, as amended from time to time called the Act. The board has complied with the provisions of the Act, ministerial orders, ministerial, ministerial orders, and the Ministry of Education and Childcare policies respecting the amended annual budget adopted by this bylaw. This bylaw may be cited as school district number thirty-eight Richmond amended annual budget bylaw for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The attached statement two shows showing the estimated revenue and expense for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year and the total budget bylaw amount of three hundred and seventy-six million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year was prepared in accordance with the Act. Statement two, four, and schedules one to four are adopted as the amended annual budget of the board for the year fiscal year of twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Can I have a mover and seconder for the first reading? Uh, trustee Tabalini moves and uh trustee Larson second. I now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? The first reading is carried. I will now read the second reading of the bylaw in summary, as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. The amended annual budget bylaws has been prepared in accordance with the School Act, ministerial orders and ministry policies. The total budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year amounts to three hundred and seventy-six million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Statement two, four, and schedules one to four are adopted as the amended annual budget of the board for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four uh slash twenty twenty-five. And I have a mover and seconder for the second reading. Uh, trustee Wong, thank you, moves, uh seconded by trustee Yang. Are there any questions or discussion? Being there are none, I now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? The second reading is carried. We'll now read the third and final uh reading of the bylaw, as trustees have the full bylaw in front of you. The amended annual budget bylaw has been prepared in accordance with the School Act, ministerial orders and ministry policies. The total budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year amounts to three hundred and seventy-six million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand and seven hundred and fifty dollars. Statement two, four, and schedules one to four are adopted as the amended annual budget of the board for the fiscal years of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And I have a mover and seconder for the third reading. Uh, trustee Sergeant moves, trustee Beliza second. Uh, are there any questions or discussion? I now call the question. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? The third and final reading is carried. The twenty twenty-four, twenty, or twenty-five amended annual budget bylaw has been read a first, second and third time, is passed and adopted this nineteenth day of February twenty twenty-five. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Okay, trustees, let's keep going here. Um, we're now on to new business. Uh, we have a report from the Secretary of Treasury regarding our revised twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual budget timeline.
Thank you, Chairperson. Uh, my report is on page thirty-nine. Uh, given the uncertainty in the broader economy and the potential operating shortfall in the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget, district staff is recommending that the board approve a revised budget timeline to have the annual budget approved by the end of May. So this recommendation ref- reflects the district's commitment to transparency, accountability and sound financial planning. Uh, by extending the approval timeline, we will be able to provide more time and opportunity for public consultation and input. Uh, while we're finalizing the budget projections on enrollment revenues and waiting for the provincial uh budget funding announcement. So uh that is my update and report, and uh I welcome any questions from trustees.
Trustees, are there any questions regarding her report? Okay, not seeing any questions? Oh, sorry. Oh, trustee Yang?
Thanks. I don't know, I just wanna say a quick word of thanks to our staff for putting um this revised um uh a timeline fairly quickly. Um, you know, in, in the old timeline, we would have had committee of the whole uh uh before any um uh decisions or, or information uh from Victoria uh could uh is released. So I, I'm, I'm very appreciative that um the committee of the whole is still uh uh going to be a fulsome uh discussion on our budget. Um, and, and it very much aligns with our commitment to transparency. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Um, item nine, questions from the public. So this is the
We need to approve the recommendation.
Oh.
I'll move the
All right, I read the recommendation that the Board of Education approved the board, uh, the revised twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual budget timeline as presented in this report. Looking for a mover and a seconder, trustee sergeant and uh moved uh seconded by trustee Beliza. Any more discussion, questions, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. Okay, questions from the public? This is not here, so I don't know if we're gonna get anything. All right. And then we have our standing committee reports, trustees, uh, chairperson Yang, audit committee, anything you wanna report?
Uh, thank you very much, Chairperson. Uh, the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty-five. Thanks.
Education Committee, Chairperson Heather, uh, trustee Larson.
Um, minutes of the meeting are uh uh a- attached. And I want to just say, we had a very informative uh meeting on A I and uh the benefits of educational opportunities. It was quite fascinating. So um if you can look it up and see it in the minutes, it's, it's really quite um informative. And our next meeting is Wednesday, April sixteenth uh at six o'clock P M.
Thank you. Facilities in building, I'm the chairperson for that one. Um, minutes of the meeting held on January eighth are attached for information. The next meeting is Wednesday, March fifth at four thirty. Also, we, we welcome um Jonathan Ho, who was our former direct earth manager of energy and sustainability, who got promoted to director of Richmond Project Team. So uh, um, congratulations, uh, Jonathan. Uh, Finance and Legal Committee, uh, trustee Sergeant.
Thanks very much. Attached are the minutes from our last meeting on January fifteenth. And a meeting uh will be held on, no, a meeting was held on, excuse me, February twelfth. Um, and our next meeting is April sixteenth at ten A M. Thank you.
Policy Committee, trustee Tabalini.
Yeah, um, Policy Committee always has some work to bring. So uh this time, we have policy one O three. Um, collaboration and community, one O three R A. Uh, foundations for learning and policy one O three R B, complaints and appeals by staff. And basically, um, as we've seen before, this policy is minor revisions um to bring it into line with um our new understandings through the D E I lens. And um, you know, also with our uh terminology in indigenous context. And so there are quite minor revisions. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve minor revisions to one O three collaboration and community, policy one O three R A, foundations of learning, um, and one O three R B. Uh, complaints, appeals by staff in accordance with policy two O four, creation of revision of policy and regulations.
Okay, moved by trustee Tabalini. Can I get a second there? Trustee Yang, uh, any questions for trustee Tabalini?
I don't know if we have the X that word tradition, traditional, traditional. It's one of the words that the, there is some kind of historical connotations. But we still keep on saying that we are on a ceded traditional, uh, unceded traditional territory. So I'm just asking if the, we have considered that in our recommendations.
I don't think that one actually shows up in this policy. Is that correct?
Well, well, to the chair, um
You see, and I
It's uh trustee Beliza referring to um the uh, the acknowledgement of land or
The acknowledgement that he is referring to, not, not in this policy.
So perhaps that trustee Beliza could clarify to the chair.
Probably you did. I yelled it to the chair.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to call a question. Or is there another question?
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing no more questions, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. You have another one?
I do. Um, this one is a notice of motion. Uh, and the notice of motion uh that a recommendation will be presented at the March twelfth public meeting of the Board of Education to approve once again minor revisions to policy one O five, one O five R, district code of debt. And this is, this is sort of the, this is the same thing. It's, it's to align it with our D E I lens and our terminology in indigenous context.
Okay, and that's just a notice of motion, right?
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, uh, we move on to item eleven, board committee and representative reports. Uh, first one being council board liaison committee. There was a meeting held January twenty-ninth. Does anyone want to report back from that meeting at all? Was there anything earth shattering that we wanna? Uh, okay, um, item B, B C S T A, the provincial council meeting will be held on February twenty-sixth, or sorry, twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. And the B C P C annual general meeting was held on January thirty, thirty-first. Does anyone want to report back on that one?
No, I'll be there Saturday morning on Zoom for the, for the, oh, you were asking about the
B C P C.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm talking about B C S T.
I can report on B C P C. Uh, first of all, though, I wanted to note that the next meeting of Policy Committee will be Monday, April fourteenth at eleven A M. And give me one second. Uh, so trustee Sergeant and myself attended our uh B C P C, which is a B ski, B pub, B C, Public School Employers Association. Uh, annual general meeting. Um, we were presented with the, the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, and it was approved by the representative council. Uh, elections, we held elections um for um Um. B C P C Board of Director, Directors and they were all acclaimed, so Kootenay Boundary is Don Lang. Uh, Northern Interior, Linda Martins. Northern, Northwest Region was Margaret Warcup and Thompson Okanagan is Rob Zandi and the rest. Are continuing in their roles for districts. Um. The meeting, there was a bylaw amendment, um, and it was just really a housekeeping amendment such as the ones we do here. Um, on a naming of a school district, uh. And then there was board chair and C E O reports. Um. We held regional roundtables and that was really um, interesting uh, to discuss um. Uh, matters that, that um, issues that were facing uh, school districts and while bargaining. Um, the bargaining components are confidential, the overall issues that were identified across regions in. Were increased leaves, recruitment challenges. Housing issues, complex student needs and professional development. And um. You know, there was, there was a great. Amount of uh, discussion also on training, on H R and labor relations topics and, and it was, it was very interesting exercise that. That we participated in. Uh, there was a lot of discussion on bargaining and local teacher bargaining, local support staff bargaining and provincial. Teacher and provincial support staff bargaining. And um. And the communication during bargaining, which uh, is very important. And this B C P C is going, well, is committed to um. Uh, providing consistency and transparency in their, in their communications with boards of education and partners. Uh, to share information regularly about the bargaining process. Um, they'll be sharing bargaining bulletins, um, and you know, depending on the confidentiality, confidentiality. And um. There was discussion on recruit, recruitment and intent, uh, retention. And um. That was, that, the, that was um. Discussed and it's been discussed by the Ministry of Education and Childcare and B C P C, so. Um, there are a lot of efforts, including teacher mentorship, recruiting indigenous teachers, northern B C rural practicum awards and pre-employment. Hiring centers for teacher. And French teacher recruitment. There was also discussion about class, which is coordinated legal and arbitration support services, the class program. Um. And that report's going to be shared with the sector later this month and then there was a staffing. Update on uh, staff that have joined B C P C. Um, and there's a new executive director, employee relations, sector services, uh, it's Elsa. Elsa. I can't read it. Elsa, I think it's Blickan. To B C P C, so, and that's about it. It was very interesting couple of days that we spent discussing all things bargaining.
You, trustee Tabalini.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to correspondence, we don't have any. Bring this to the final one, adjournment, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, trustee Yang. Moved, seconded by trustee Beliza, all in favor? Great. Folks, thank you all for coming tonight, drive home safely. And trustees, we have to continue our in camera.